Six will not come down.
Recording in focus.
We'll start with a prayer.
Good morning, and I will call him Son of God. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this week. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect everyone in our school system. Thank you for protecting St. Martin Parish from damage. Give us your grace as we learn parts of public service.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true government of the states, the one nation under God. Adam and Dee, I have the vision. In the mouth. Okay, we move on to Sun's script, we're going in the box.
Uh, Sun's script is employed in the month this month is Ms. Connie Romero. Ms. Connie, here. Uh, she might have not walked over yet.
Okay, now we can see when she come in there. Um, is there any addition or deletion to the business? If not, we add number two, which is the consent agenda. Uh, from A to I, is there any island that needs to be pulled out for destruction or if not?
C.
Okay. Island C, you will pull out for destruction. And, and more, the, uh, three more for.
Move to seven.
Seven.
Four to mark, second number is the Doryo, all the table.
All right.
Book the list. Have we, we know we do?
Yes.
And it is, motion Karen. Uh, Adam C. Wanted to tell our group to request a waiver of self-defense.
Oh, okay. I wanted to find out, um, however, how many times have we weighed their taxes?
I feel that on the top of my head that we consider, we consider your forty minutes.
We don't have to weigh tax, we weigh.
Yeah, it's a minimal, I'm sorry, you know, we never weigh taxes or injuries, we only weigh penalties.
Right.
And only if a minimal injury, if it's naming or if it's compliance. And we typically only do it one time, I cannot.
Because I've gone with, um, what's his name, we see that, uh, the other guy, um.
Matt.
Matt, yeah. He didn't, he didn't pay more, and now we're starting to do it again. But I'm doing, because it's.
Good afternoon, how are you? So kind of like you moved, you like did down in Texas, you know, so you probably want to work with.
Obviously, I wanted to know about Natala, you know, this, this lead.
Two.
No, that's what I wanted to know.
I mean, I, I can, I can never get back to you.
All right.
Okay.
The motion for Adam C.
Motion.
For the third, second, third, C, or C. And it is motion Karen.
Karen.
Yes. Okay. We'll go ahead, uh, do, uh, that's good, that's why even left.
Okay, our Sun's script is employed in the month this month is Ms. Connie Romero. Ms. Connie works in the payroll department, and he can come up with something. This year with COVID, with all the extra supplements we gave and all of the things along with COVID, summer remediation programs, summer learning, all these things, generated a tremendous number of extra paid time sheets. Quadruple probably what we normally had. So it was a lot, a lot of work for the payroll department, and Ms. Connie works in that department, and processed all of these things without any extra pay, without any extra, even asking for any help. She took it all in stride and got it all done. So Ms. Connie, we appreciate all your work, and every month when I get lunch, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, did we call it, you see? Yes, you showed it. There was a fourth, uh, third, second number is D. Uh, final split, recommendation. Adam B, and D. This is what.
Post-teacher.
One of the four D, second number is D. Open the machine. And it is, and motion Karen. I'm number five, David. Presentation by Connor Agers regarding LSU, Adam Crawford, and your report.
So we're once again here, I know, uh, I've seen in the years that I've been here in St. Martin, one of the things that we do very annually is we'll come and kind of give our state of the union address, kind of, you know, y'all's support, the LSU Ag Center here in St. Martin Parish. And here's our opportunity to come today, once a year, we'll come and kind of tell you what we're doing, or what is the programs we're doing here in the parish. When you look at our office here in St. Martin, um, we have a number of different employees. Myself, I do the agriculture and horticulture work. Probably our biggest program that impacts of the school board are, is our 4H youth development program. And we actually, we have two 4H agents. We have this whole Guidry, who's been, um, a solid word in our program for years. And we also have a new 4H agent that you'll be hearing from tonight, Ms. Erica Coria, um, that started actually, um, last Friday. Um, we had Miss Hannah Deville, they've been here for a few years, and, um, she actually took a position at the state level, and, um, we were able to replace her, and so we decided to have Ms. Erica in place. We also have family consumers sciences, not bad program, you'll be hearing from Ms. Jessica Ramada and Ms. Bobby Mitchell. And we have a new administrative coordinator. Um, we have this lady, Vajrol, who's here, I don't know if she wants to wave to y'all. Y'all, if y'all come in our office, um, for years, we had this David Farme, worked at our office for about forty years. She was a fixture there at our extension office, but we were able to get this lady, Vajrol, um, to transfer, actually from our Lafayette, um, extension program, so she's very knowledgeable about extension, we were very fortunate to get her, and, um, she's been working with us, um, now for about six months. Um, she's been employees. Okay, so when you look at St. Martin Parish, uh, we're not making any new land, I always kind of bring up that point, you know, if anything with urbanization, we're probably losing, in some cases, some of our very good crop lands here in the parish. But our major crop is sugarcane, you can see how that acreage is, is pretty much, pretty flat for the, you know, for the main point to make with that is that we're usually somewhere around thirty thousand acres of cane, kind of year in and year out. And, um, the crop this year, as we were talking with some school board members earlier, this is a year that'll go off down, is probably one of the wettest there. We've had more rain this year, kind of from start to finish, it looks like, even October, which is typically our driest month. Um, hopefully we'll get a reprieve, but, you know, we generally move into a wet, a wet summer and then dry up in the fall, and that just hasn't happened. Uh, but we're probably on record, um, to have one of the wettest years and probably, um, you'll get probably eight, eight or more inches of rain this year to say, you know, at, at this pace. Um, that rain is good for crops in a way, but you also need to have sunshine. And when you don't get enough sunlight, a lot of times, um, we're not going to make the best yield. So as we harvested some of our crops this year, we haven't necessarily seen record, record yields. The yields have been average at best, and, um, we just started grinding about a week ago. Uh, looks a little promising, I think that we're not going to have the bumper crop we had last year. Uh, but the sugar levels, a lot of, the sugar content is going to be determined by whether we actually have during the grinding season. If we have good sunny days, um, usually that's going to go a long way in determining what the sugar level is going to be in the cane. The tonnage, a lot of that's already been decided in terms of the tiller in the plant, and it looks like our tonnage will probably down a little bit, um, but, you know, the sugar could get better, especially if we can get some, some dry, clear weather. Our sorghum crop, even though sorghum prices were high, um, you know, sorghums are difficult to grow here, especially in wet years like this, we had close to about four thousand acres this year. The yields so far, we still have some beans that are not to be harvested, but the yields have been probably about the pharmaceutical range, which is nothing to get too excited about, um, but, um, they've been, they've been average at best. And now our rice crop also, a lot of our rice was planted later this year, um, our yields have been, haven't been the greatest. Rice is wind pollinated, we get a lot of rain, a lot of times you don't get great pollination on rice. Get more sheet fly, a lot more diseases, especially if you plant later. We haven't necessarily made bumper crops or rice this year. When you look at agriculture in St. Martin Parish, it's a main economic driver of this parish. Um, sugarcane alone, as you would expect, is our biggest crop generating a lot of income, not just the cane that's grown here in St. Martin, but we also bring in cane from a lot of neighboring parishes, um, that, that support our meal. So we, we look at all our plant crops generating about thirty-eight million, and altogether agriculture bringing in about sixty-four million dollars. We look at our animal crops, um, we have to, of course, look at horses, um, beef cattle bringing about six point three billion. Crawfish, especially ponds and, and wild caught crawfish, generate a lot of income, usually from year in, year out. It's fifteen billion dollars or better, and then there's also a lot of wildlife releases and basins that then also generate income for agriculture. We provide, um, services to the public that we want people to take advantage of. So if you are here, are you fine town, have any questions about, you know, what's vines are growing in my tree? How can I control that without damaging my tree? Um, you know, you're seeing weird things on your okra leaves. Um, you know, we're the people that you can come to in today's technology. Uh, you can text us a picture, you can email us a picture, you can drop off a sample at our office, and we have support staff at the LSU Ag Center. If I'm not able to answer on parish level, we can get those answers to you often from our state specialists, where we have a plant disease diagnostic clinic, we have salt testing, warrant testing lab, and we have a support staff who can get us the answer, what the best management practices are to help fix your problem. We do demonstration plots and variety trials, um, we've done some work in the last few years, and some of the fruit crops like blackberries, we've done work with turds, and we're there to help you with any problems that you want to look at, or some issues that you're having, you know, pasture or lawn, of you feel free to contact us. We're also trying to do field days, uh, we are involved a lot, I'm involved a lot with the Mass Agarda program, which is centered in Lafayette, and we also do grow our leaves. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jessica, she'll come up and talk about, uh, the work that she's doing here in the parish.
Hey, so, uh, good afternoon, my name is Jessica Rindevo. So I work, uh, in nutrition department, and this is Ms. Bobby Mitchell, she also works there with me. So we focus on, uh, low income communities that are eligible for staff benefits. We also work with anyone with any nutrition question. We work with all ages, who will talk more specifically about the children that work. So this year, we've kind of switched things up because of the pandemic, we tried to focus on things that are more sustainable, things that people can do when they're outside or socially distant. So we put in, um, story walks in Longfellow, Angela, and State Park. We're working on acquiring funds to expand this effort across the parish. And this is, if you're not familiar with story walk, it's, uh, we take a storybook, and every page is on a different post, so you go on a little walk with your family, and you end up reading a whole book on your wall. So just trying to combine, uh, health and literacy, uh, is a great thing that we've done at the library. We've also put in walking and biking trail signs in a park in St. Martinville as well. We're also looking, um, to acquire some funding to expand that effort. We've created, um, videos with different healthy recipes that are being shared across social media, um, as well as some coalition efforts. So a lot of these efforts are all through a coalition that we've worked with the community on a parish level to create called Healthy St. Martin, and those are some of the things that we've mentioned, the walking trail signs, story walk, we working with, uh, Arc of St. Martin to put in a community garden that has been funded through a grant. We've also done playground essentials, you can see on the top left, at Early Learning Center. These are all things that are either paid for by the Ag Center or been paid for by a grant. Um, and if other schools want these playground essentials, we have them all, we have all the supplies. If any other school wants them, we would be more than happy to work with you on that. You go ahead.
Good evening, I am the snack at Nutrition Education here in St. Martin Parish. And basically, what I do is, um, I will go in the kindergarten classes, the Head Start classes, I will, uh, do classes at the monthly Head Start parent meeting. And as you all know, this is Head Start Awareness Week. And I have been invited at the Grove Ridge Head Start Awareness Week celebration at St. Martinville and the Early St. Martinville as well. I've been focusing a lot of my energy in St. Martinville and Grove Ridge, but my goal this year is to move forward in the Harrowfield, Cecilia, Henderson area. So if anybody can drop a name, I would appreciate that as well. So moving right along, on the screen, I did a virtual class, these were a group of kids, at least thirteen at the most, and a young lady was leading the group. They were in a virtual, like, learning bubble, and they were from kindergarten, I think one of them, the oldest was in high school. And, um, these little boys were in my vegetable food class, how to add fruits and vegetables to your meal. Their homework assignment for that class was to go home, tell them your parents, we need to help you purchase the meal, we need to help you prepare the meals. And Bobby says, if you do that, we'll eat more fruits and vegetables. So the mom brought them to Johnson's in St. Martinville, Taco Tuesday, nine. And their dad was with them, and their mom, and they bought lettuce and cabbage and some other stuff to put in the taco. Well, the next week when I did the class, and we're so excited, we didn't get a kind of big story, and Bobby, Bobby, we had Taco Tuesday, and our giant filled his taco with cabbage and lettuce, and they were so happy. So I, I consider that a success story. And my final success story at the Martin Luther King doing the Early Learning Center in St. Martinville. Jessica scored in our instrumental, and they'll give a little potted, uh, garden hair start. Children ate the vegetables, it's, the potted garden has been sleeping since COVID, and we are about to wake it up this month on their family funding. We also do nutrition classes with staff as well, because you all know that self-care, it's just as important when you're responsible for so many people. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
I'm here to talk about the 4H program. And first of all, we are so excited to be back in the classrooms, actually doing 4H plumb meetings almost back to normal. Um, we'll deal with the math, that's okay. But as you can see, uh, 4Hers are five times more likely to graduate from college, four times more likely to get back to their communities, and two times more likely to participate in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, um, curriculums. So, but I'd like to point out those stats first. Um, the basic program components of 4H have to do with healthy living, science, engineering, technology, agriculture, citizenship, and leadership, and volunteer development. Um, last year, as you all know, was a little different, we couldn't get into the school, to, if we were able to do a club meeting, and we were trying to do it virtual or recording the meeting, um, in spite of all that, we were able to hold a few 4H events. We still had our fun day in our last block shows, we did a, instead of overnight camps, the challenge camp and summer camp, we did one day, day camps actually in the parish. We still were allowed to do achievement day, our 4H U contest, our hack virtual, hack in person. We still, still did our honors night and, and a few workshops. So the show had to go on, and we tried to keep them as involved as we could with the COVID regulations. Uh, but this coming year, uh, we have educational focus for our third graders and then the rest of our 4Hers. For the third graders, we're going to focus on a social emotional development curriculum, where we talk about individuality, and manners, and diversity, and disability, so we'll be pointing out those lessons to the third graders. The school is, is always a literary focus to it, art presentation, and then something to do with the family at home to reinforce what they're taught. For our fourth and twelfth graders, um, when we ask at the end of each year what they want to learn about, the overwhelming majority said they wanted to learn more about healthy living and making healthy choices. So we chose the youth health, food, finance, fitness curriculum. So our lessons this month, we're talking about how they should drink low fat milk and water instead of the sugary drinks, and we're actually toting around a twenty ounce bottle of Coke and asking them how much sugar they think is in there, and actually showing them how much sugar is in there, and it's very, uh, enlightening. And those are just some of the, um, lessons that we'll be doing this year. Um, our community leadership focuses more on service learning, they do still do the occasional service project, but we focus more on learning, we are going to, um, learn about mental health awareness and those topics that are listed on there. Uh, one thing I do want to point out, um, I guess when 4H, uh, was impacted so much by COVID last year, we were looking for a way to still reach kids. So they came up with, uh, a bunch of different enrich, school enrichment programs. Any teacher, any school system can access, register for this, it's free curriculum, and it's geared towards specific subjects and specific grade levels. I know y'all have that in a pack, um, but they have one on living your financial experience, um, for our high schoolers. There's incubating ed, education for third and eighth graders. There is a weapons program for fourth and up. There's, uh, creating a culture of caring, anti-bullying from fifth to eighth grade, middle school. There's a health rocks, um, teaching them how to be, um, substance-free, talks about bathing and smoking and that kind of stuff from sixth to eighth grade. And then we have a team up with fibers, it was a collaboration between LSU and Henderson Fibers. Um, they came with, with a curriculum for kid board for fifth grade. I mean, any teacher can register for this, I'll try to send that out, um, lsuag.com/schoolenrichment is how you get, um, to register for this. Oh, one more, those are all the curriculum. All right, um, our project clubs, sometimes I come with numbers, last year we were a group, I'm liking part of the numbers, but I do want to emphasize our shooting sports program, live rock and leadership, uh, those are our most, uh, involved projects. Um, I did bring five new, I know we're taking a little while, I, I promise this will be brief. The five new can come up real quick, um, they have recently been, um, excelled in, uh, different situations. Some with regards to participating in the national shooting sports competition, and some with their state records and project work where they, um, actually won trips, I'll let them talk about it. And then I'll wrap up.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Josie Blanchard, and I've been a 4H member for about ten years now. Um, I have competed in state records for most of the years that I have sent in my record book to compete. Um, through this, I have learned, I have won about three trips, two of them I've already gone on, which was the, um, wetland trip and then the seventh and eighth grade trip, which was mainly just kind of hanging around Baton Rouge, getting kind of the college life, learning just different aspects of agriculture. And then this November, I'm getting the chance to go to, um, Atlanta, Georgia for the National 4H Congressship. Um, I would not trade my choice of joining 4H for anything. It has been one of the greatest experiences of my life, and I think that if you have the chance, put your kid in it, encourage them, and it's really fun and a great opportunity.
Thank you, Josie.
My name is Liam Anderson, I've been shooting recurve archery for shooting sports for over five years. And last year, I made it to nationals and qualified for, I made fourteenth in the nation. It's been very exciting.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Abby Cory, and I'm a senior at St. Longfellow Senior High. I've been a 4H member for ten years, a junior leader member for six years, and in shooting sports for ten years. 4H has expanded my knowledge about citizenship, leadership, and responsibility. I've competed in state records contests several times over the years and have won several trips. The latest trip that I have won is a leadership trip to disengage in a way of development this coming year. I am also active in the 4H shooting sports program. I'm currently a St. Martin Parish shooting sports ambassador, and also a Louisiana State Shooting Sports Ambassador. I've participated in the following disciplines, small rifle, small pistol, air rifle, air pistol, and BB gun. This summer, I qualified in air rifle for the 4H National Shooting Sports Competition in Grand Island, Nebraska. I placed third in silhouette, ninth in standing, and sixth overall in the nation. My team was seven. 4H has given me opportunities that I may not have had. 4H has helped me become the person I am today. I'd like to thank you all for allowing 4H to be a part of our school organization. You happy?
Hello, um, I'm Connor Guidry, and I was a senior, I've been in 4H since I was in third grade, so I've been in the last ten years. Um, ever since I started 4H, I have been in shooting sports, and I have gone through many of the disciplines, uh, BB, artillery compound, shotgun, twenty-two rifle, and last year I was the first person at St. Martin Parish to be in the Musliming discipline. And, um, last year I got a chance to go to Nebraska and Musliming despite being the first Musliming, uh, discipline. Um, I had the opportunity to go to Grand Island, Nebraska, uh, with people in me, and, uh, I say we did pretty well, uh, our team got second overall, and I placed twelfth in the nation. Uh, 4H has been a part of my life since as long as I can remember, and I'm very, very proud for 4H in your heart.
Hello, my name is Billy Cory. I'm an eleventh grade student at St. Longfellow Senior High, and I've been in 4H for nine years, a junior leader for five years, and I've been in shooting sports for eight years. And 4H has taught me a lot about leadership and responsibility. And I've competed in state records several times, and I've won several trips, which I'm about to go on a trip to Atlanta, Georgia, and compete, or participate in the National 4H Congress. And I'm also active in the shooting sports program, and I'm currently a St. Martin Parish Shooting Sports Ambassador, and a Louisiana State Shooting Sports Ambassador. And I've participated in the long distance, small rifle, small pistol, air rifle, and BB gun. And this past year, I placed first in the state, uh, twenty twenty-one competition for BB gun. And I've been qualified to go to the national competition in Rogers, Arkansas, but it was canceled due to COVID nineteen. But I still had a great time in shooting sports. And 4H has given me the opportunity to see a lot of things outside of school or my community that I wouldn't have been able to experience, and I just hope to thank y'all for allowing 4H to be able to continue and to thrive.
Thank you.
I can see that's one of our success stories, I don't know if it's right about all of them, but that's all we have time for. Um, if you could flip it, all of our 4Hers are also involved in community service, uh, they go to 4H State Capitol and learn all about leadership, and, and we could legislate towards the learn that process as well. Go ahead. Um, 4H grows here, as you know, St. 4H is in St. Martin Parish, and we are a traditional 4H, um, parish. Uh, our mission, all of us, whether it's ag, food and nutrition, 4H, uh, we're all part of the LSU Ag Center, and our mission is to help the people of Louisiana improve their lives through an educational process um, that uses research-based knowledge that focuses on the issues and needs of the people in our parish. Is there any questions? Sorry to take all y'all's time, but I have to write one.
Thank you, y'all, we just wanted to introduce Ms. Erica Cory.
Nice to meet y'all.
She's, uh, just started last week, she's our new. She just started last week with our new 4H team, so you'll probably be seeing her a lot of our 4H events.
Thank you.
Steve, Mr. Anderson. So Ms. Anderson's presenting to another government body here. Without some satisfaction, if we move on to Adam Seaton. Consider approved as a Christian, but in segregation and plant office position.
Can you activate the number of Christians from the community segregation compliance office? Do you have any question that you can answer?
We would like to figure out salary.
Is the supervisor position, is it on the supervisor salary scale?
But I'll understand that. Other than the ability to work with that capacity, just make it more than supervisor salary.
In southern districts, yes, it would be.
That has a lot of work.
It is a hard work, which is the reason the position is created and has to spread out to several people. And it is a tremendous accomplishment. That's why I came to the board and asked that we create a position for that person so responsible of the years. Could be 40 and make sure that all of your defenders can send our people there.
Right. Mine's also a lot, if it's still Louisiana, but I'm going to be saying off the case. Probably ought to get the best out of it and you won't compare half that.
Our supervisor salary scale is fair enough. I know that I can double check.
And what else?
Did you call me up a car?
Yes, sure did.
I apologize, I couldn't hear very well. The job qualifications or details regarding the DSEC compliance officer? Specifically, I'm interested in knowing how this officer will communicate with the community, specifically Catahoula, which is very involved with the DSEC case. Will this officer communicate with the Catahoula community, via the school board or directly? Do we have any guidelines for that or information so far?
Well, compliance officers are supervisors working for the school. If people have questions or concerns, they can contact the office. And that person can communicate with them, provide them with whatever information they ask for.
So it could be directly then with citizens from the community with the officer?
Yes, questions pertaining to the desegregation case would be referred to that person.
Okay. And do we have a job description?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the back.
Okay, thank you. And we have qualifications and salaries?
They're on the supervisor's salary scale, the same as other supervisors, depending on the number of years of service. It requires a master's degree, but if you have higher than a master's, there's some adjustments would have. And... If you want this approved, you can give a five.
That would be good. Will, I'm not interested in the position, but will it be publicly advertised? It will not be advertised?
What, Miller's on transfer, someone currently on staff into that position, Mr. Frederick Wills. He is currently the child well parent superintendent supervisor, so his position would be advertised.
So there's already a name in mind?
That's correct, yes.
Someone is already qualified for unadvertised for this position?
That's correct.
And what is the salary?
I don't know the salary.
Okay. And the best way to communicate with the compliance officer is directly via email, phone call, letter?
Email, you can call the office, and the receptionist can route you to him. You can give a message, phone, and he'll call you back.
When will they learn who the name of the compliance officer?
It's just Reverend Woods.
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have a hearing loss. Frederick Wills, thank you so much. You've been very helpful. I'm new at this, I'm just learning so much.
What's the board that's on our, you can have one. Do you have a copy of the document? Do you need a copy of the document?
Thank you. Oh, right there, direct.
Okay, sir.
All right.
Okay, is there any more questions? What's your question about supporting, say, diversity? What, let me see? And then, what's your guess? Okay. The solicitor. Solicitor request, the peer, it will go with. Mandate, so you. Mandate, so you. Go on one. Okay.
Hello, my name is... I'm going to take that one from some parent. My daughter, she's over there, she needs a, she wants to go to school, but I feel that her wearing masks, like everybody else, swamped here. Breathing no COVID-19, it's improving that mask for people. It takes away, it's funny, I want to point out that the lady by the board, the 4H lady was talking about how promoting health community and promoting individuality. With that, those masks do not, that's why I'm there. I don't understand how y'all can contradict yourselves by saying, "I want to promote individuality." I come, you're afraid to take away children's individuality. You take away their speech, you try to silence them. And I have a problem with that, it's my child. Louisiana children's cold state, that the parents have the right to determine the best preventive and medical treatment for their child. That's what does us. And if I, y'all comply, I'm giving away all rights as parents. And I have a problem with that, because that's my child. So I'm having a homeschool. She's wanting to go to school, favor the children. She's very social, she's a social butterfly. And she can't, because everybody here comply with the government. I would just like to see her stand up and give us a call. Tell us, us parents are right back. Because this is like a slippery slope. Once y'all start keeping away our rights, it's going to stop. I mean, I'll be like my child, if open, and be able to speak her mind. About putting these masks on your face, or you're going to silence me every month. You're harming the children's health by their, breathing no COVID-19, they're under research, we have the fatigue, haze. It's long-term, they have brain damage. So that's, that's child abuse. So y'all are, I mean, anyone of us produces our children, y'all call CS on us. And I feel that the children are being abused. On the way over here, I saw the kids playing at the playground, standing right next to each other, standing right next to each other. I'm glad I happened to figure that out. I never had a mask on your face. So in our case, to sit down and play after I've had a mask on your face, we're next to playing playground, bumping elbows, cuddling and stuff, with no mask. So to me, I just have a problem with my child's health being concerned. So I'm standing here, trying to stand for a year, and hoping that we do the right thing, and I'm fine. Thank you.
We're going to move on to the next item. We can have some data. Both of them were pressed. Because we can't do that. Subliminal evaluation. She, okay, wait, speak on.
I just want to start. That's what we get done. Put in process. So let me just start, I told it seven, seven, third.
Yeah, my, we discussed it next session.
No, it's just to start the process.
So you want the evaluations coming up, really like we can.
Sure, I said, did you say on the back? I said tonight, I'm a summer.
Is it all we do every year?
Yeah, it's, it's annual, that's fine.
Yeah, that's how it was. That's maybe October, December, the 31st. Give it to us.
I have this aim, this is not the evaluation. If I comply, I'm going to give a call. We, we, just give the process, yeah. So the equal.
That's how it was.
All right. Any more questions on it? Move on to Adam's seven, the next session. Do you have anything in the next turn? Say, okay. We have both of us picked up, say, by the state, on the, and the next. Where's the next session?